Good to go. Welcome, everyone. The time is now seven thirty P M. This is the November eighteenth twenty twenty one work session of the Allenville Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight. In person at Borough Hall, we are also live streaming our meetings. For those who prefer to watch elsewhere, we ask those present to please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business meeting. As always, there will be several opportunities for everyone to be heard, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure, in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website. Published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November sixteenth two thousand twenty one sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sassa.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Losinski.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you very much. Presentation twenty twenty one best practices checklist, otherwise AKA the bane of our existence. Each year, the state of New Jersey requires municipalities to answer a series of questions known as best practices checklist, which evaluates municipal operations and encourages critical thinking about management and planning. The amount of state aid that each municipality receives is directly tied to their score on the checklist. I want to, on behalf of everyone, thank Alyssa Mayer for spearheading this task again, for working with our department heads to once again achieve a score that gets the Borough one hundred percent funding. I know it doesn't come easily. You make it look easy, but I know there's a lot of work. We've all, you know, been on the phone.
Answer the question.
Yeah, but right. It's an amazing, it's an enormous amount of time. We truly appreciate your attention on behalf of all the residents. So is there anything you'd like to add? You want to walk us through anything that's noteworthy?
Um, you've covered a lot of it. I just want to say that this year there were twenty seven questions, scored questions. There were forty eight altogether. They have various unscored questions that are really just there to they're used to determine where municipalities may need more assistance. This year, those unscored questions emphasize shared services, A R P funds, tax collection, and planning and economic development. Primarily geared towards the larger towns and cities, not the little ones like us. But of the twenty seven scored questions, we answered yes to twenty six to we answered not applicable because we don't participate in the accumulated absence liability. Our insurance broker, we don't contract with him for our health benefits. We get them from the state. We don't have a Board of Fire Commissioners. And for our shared services, we're not the lead agency. So we didn't have that. The only thing we said no to was if we had electric vehicle charging stations.
Right.
And we don't.
Right.
So.
They were at the league convention.
We could get ourselves a grant too.
All right, so we will be getting our full portion of the state aid, and there really weren't any areas that needed to be addressed. We're very compliant with the best practices.
Wonderful.
And I congratulate all of you because we're doing a good job.
Yeah, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. Public comment, first of three opportunities for the public to present, to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard at this time? Savasano.
Just briefly, Mark Savasano, twenty two, Greenland Place. I want to thank Councilwoman Omen for all of her hard work, and congratulations on the passage of the water amendment to sell the supply.
Great.
It was, I know it was a lot of hard work, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very nice. Yes. Administration agenda review. So we have minutes from the May twenty seventh twenty twenty one work and regular session for consideration. We pulled that the last meeting carried it to now, so hopefully everyone has had a chance to read it, and they're okay with that. We have twelve resolutions on the consent agenda and pending litigation matter for closed session. For the matters on the consent agenda with Michelle's help at the discussion that I had with Councilwoman Holman, which is a great idea, we prepared a summary of what those items are so that you see, although we think they're routine administrative and belonging to consent agenda, we wanted you to see where they came from and what they're about. So we're going to continue to do that so that you're all aware. If you have any questions, please, now would be the appropriate time to ask them. I do want to note that on resolution twenty one dash two six two, we'll be, we will be hiring Nicholas Messina as a full-time dispatcher. I want to welcome Nicholas to the Borough. We're happy to have him on our team. Nicholas will be replacing Shafik Zaref, one of our longtime police dispatchers, was resigned for a different career opportunity. I've worked with Shafik. He's been great. We are sorry to see him go. On behalf of the Borough, we thank him for his service and his dedication to Allendale, and we wish him all the best on his new path. Does anyone have any questions on any items listed on tonight's regular session? Okay, so let's go with committee reports. Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you, Mayor. As of yesterday, I got these numbers from Sergeant Griffith yesterday. Calls into the Borough as to date yesterday. We had fourteen thousand fifty one nine one one calls, we're one thousand nine hundred and seven. Fire Department calls, we're one hundred and fifty seven. A VAC calls, we're four hundred and thirty one. And we will be having a meeting on December seventh, hopefully for long.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilman Sassa.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Uland Use Committee has not met since our last mayor and council meeting. We need to schedule a meeting. It normally would have been, I think, yesterday, but I was at the League of Municipalities Convention. And also, there's something I want to get on the agenda which requires me to do a little research. I don't want to waste committee's time. You know, I like, I like get done as fast as possible, and there's still long meetings sometimes. So I'm going to schedule something, you know, as soon as I can, for John's help, and then we'll go from there.
Great.
Um, I have a book here. Well, Small Town Big Sacrifice Four. It is the stories of the men from Ramsey and Allendale, New Jersey, who made the supreme sacrifice. So written by, I might have spoken about this about a year ago, written by Paul Chapurko, who I spoke to on the phone. He lives in Hawthorne. He is a Marine Corps veteran. And he had seen our Gold Star Streets, and he contacted Ron, and Ron put him in touch with me. So we spoke a bit, and I think I put him in, I might have put him in touch with Styles at the time. The book was in progress. So anyway, I bought two copies on behalf of the Borough. I don't think it's an appropriate age appropriate for Hillside, probably not Brookside. The Lee Memorial Library has a copy. And I called Julie Goldberg, the librarian at Northern Highlands, and she was thrilled. She would like, they'd like to have it. So I donated a copy on behalf of the mayor and council to the Northern Highlands Library, and I have another, this copy is, is the Borough's. I guess I'm the custodian of it for the time being, but I thought it would be very good if, in the next time we do some Memorial Day, you know, researcher, you know, for any purpose, if anybody in the Borough needs, you know, information, it's good. It's a good read. I'm going to read it again, especially the Allendale folks. So that's that.
Is it available online?
Yes. I don't know if it's still in print. He's, he self-published it.
Oh, he did.
And I get how I, I think I love a copy too, so. Well, Joanne can borrow a borough anytime that she likes. Oh, the other thing is, he was so gracious. He sent me lots of documents that he digitized that I sent to Joanne Hart, by the way. So she has all of them. I put them on a zip drive for her, and she has them. There were all kinds of service records. There were obituaries, telegrams, you know, your regard to inform you, your son has been killed in action, things like that. There was at one point a question from one member of the V F W years ago that maybe somebody on the war memorial did not live in that. Curiously, the author's research that he sent me, I found in that a an obituary of this individual that clearly said, son of Mister and Misses fifty six, I'm making that number up, Forrest Road, Allendale, New Jersey. So we put that controversy to rest thanks to this research. So anyway, that's the book. Drones lately on social media, a couple, some people have been I don't want to say complaining, but drones flying around. They saw a drone. They heard a drone. And I've also seen some drone photos that have been published out there of areas in Allendale. I just want to remind everybody that we have an ordinance that addresses drones. We adopted it. Hmm, I don't remember what we adopted. It's on here someplace. Doesn't matter. Chapter one one eight drones and unmanned aircraft. The definitions are in here. It's basically prohibited under four hundred feet anywhere in the Borough to fly a drone. Over four hundred feet is F A A regulated, so it's not us. If you need to fly a drone, you know, lots of great reasons to fly a drone. Real estate, stuff like that. You have to contact. I think you're here. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I believe it's A P D, the Allendale Police Department. The chief of police and or administrative officer may authorize a waiver of any other requirements. So want to fly a drone, talk to A P D, please, first. What else to have? The deer rut, which is just a fancy rut is a fancy word for mating season, started in September and goes through officially the end of this month, but it could continue. The deer are running around like crazy. They have one thing on their mind, especially the antlered guys. And they're not looking both ways when they cross the street. A man in, unfortunately, a man in Teaneck was killed a few weeks ago when he hit a buck on his motorcycle and died fifty eight years old. And the deer also died. So be extra careful, especially at night, early morning. I went to the New Jersey League of Municipalities Convention yesterday. I got home this morning with Councilwoman Holman, Councilwoman Losinski, Ron, our Borough Attorney, Matt Councilman O'Toole. And it was really good. We hadn't been there for a number of years, so I went to a sem, I took in one really good seminar on, it was Trails One Oh One, it was called, which was really interesting. It was, it was given by, I think her name was Carrie Springer. She worked for the Somerset County Parks Department, and it was everything on maintaining your trails, building a trail, different kinds of trails. The bad news is now I have trail ending. So I'm going to be driving the rest of the council crazy, especially the land use committee, and what we can do to improve whatever trails we have and connect other trails together. So I'll see what happens there. That was good. I also met with Peter Lupo Esquire. He is a five G consultant. I talked about that in a previous meeting on the land use committee. We discussed it. Five G is the next technology in wireless. It's not here here, but it's here in the United States. T-Mobile's already rolled it out in the bigger cities. It's coming. Could be two years away. Depending on who you talk to, Verizon and eighteen T are held up because of the F A A is concerned about interference on the frequencies that they use. Apparently, T-Mobile doesn't have that problem for whatever reason. So Peter Lupo, we might discuss a resolution that he's already prepared to adopt his services. He costs us the Borough nothing. He's very much like an engineering firm where if there is an application from a carrier, eighteen T, T-Mobile, Verizon, et cetera, they'll have to put money into escrow to cover his cost. And what he does is he makes sure that we, that he's taking the best interest of Allendale in mind when this technology comes in because there's no stopping it. But you can manage it, and you can mitigate it. You can make sure it goes in the best spots, and that maybe we get some revenue for it if it goes on public property. And I don't think you'd want to stop it anyway because it's high-speed wireless, and it's really a matter of public safety because, you know, it's a good thing to have. So I spoke to him live. I met him live. We'd already had a Zoom call a few weeks ago. So I spoke to him, and that was good. I'm glad I met him. Finally, bait traps, we did a resolution a couple of months ago, I think, already. Bait traps are traps that you see usually around commercial buildings and other spots. They're designed to kill rats, which is a good thing. But they have poison bait inside, and what happens is, and I've spoken about this before, the rat goes in, eats the bait, the poison, and he runs away and dies. So that's the good news. The bad news is that the fox comes along, or the hawk, or God forbid, the bald eagle, which we do have in Allendale, a couple of them, eats the dead rat and then dies from the poison that the rat had ingested. The celery farm marsh warden, Mr. Jim Wright, who I think is in a library board meeting at this moment, is going to come in at the regular meeting, talk a little bit. He found a dead mink the other day, which he had no signs of trauma, so he believes it probably ate a poisoned rat because they are big ratters, minks. They're very aggressive little, they're cute, but they're really aggressive rat eaters. It was too decomposed to do a necropsy, I think they call it, which is basically an animal autopsy. The D E P will do them to see if, in fact, it died from poison. So we have the resolution that we did is a voluntary ban. We're asking you, again, it's mostly commercial buildings, to not put these traps out there because a, because a great horned owl has already died, a number of raptors, including an endangered raptor died, and Mr. Wright, I don't want to steal his thunder, he's going to go into more, did confirm that it was poisoned through these, these rat traps. So what do you use? You use a snap trap, which kind of is a little bit awkward because you have to set it, and then you have to go out and check it, and then you have to get rid of the dead rat that's in there, but there's no collateral damage. So we're asking people to do it. If I see a dead bald eagle, I'm definitely going to propose that it becomes mandatory. God forbid. And I'm sorry, that was a long update for not having a meeting, but I'm good.
Thank you very much.
And perfect timing, Mr. Wright.
Next is Councilwoman Holman.
Hi, everybody. I'm pleased, I think you'll, as Mark had alluded to, I'm pleased that the overwhelming majority of Allenville voters did agree with our water committee and our mayor and council that sewers would be the best steward of our water system as we move into the future. The challenges that we have today with P F O S contamination, future regulations coming down the pike, as well as potential future identified emerging contaminants will be managed by a company that focuses their business on water, and this will be a benefit to all Allenville residents. The purchase agreement executing the sale does still need to be, the whole entire transaction needs to be approved by the B P U. So while it's great that the voters are in favor of this, we can move forward to the next steps. We, we are hopeful for a closing of the sale to occur in May or June of two thousand twenty two. So we will continue to own our water system and all the facilities and responsibilities that go along with that until the time at which there actually is a closing. So there's still a lot of work to be done as we need to still be completing a large amount of information. And I did want to thank, you know, Angela Matisse had done a nice job of going through tax things and scanning Eastmans, and we just, there's a lot of work to be done. So thanks to our water committee and our our consultants and experts for getting this done. We are having weekly team meetings as well as smaller meetings from individuals that need to get things done. Allendale and Suez are continuing to work together to implement the temporary P F O S treatment at our new street facility. The Q four results, if anybody followed my video and went on to N J Water Watch, did allow us to remain under the running annual quarterly average maximum of both P F O A and P F O S, but it is, you know, point two parts per trillion under P F O A at thirteen point eight, and the limit is at fourteen parts per trillion, and at P F O S, it's at twelve point eight, and the limit is at thirteen parts per trillion. So the good news is, is that we are compliant with all N J D E P water quality standards. As somebody said before, Allenville water is, you know, it's excellent. So we are fortunate in this world to have Allenville and Suez water. And as far as the, the temporary treatment, we don't yet have approval from N J D E P. They've come back with some questions, and our experts are working with Suez to resolve some of those questions before the approval can actually go forward. The other area that I had some opportunity to really spend some time on was Allenville Senior Housing. I met with Sherri De Palma on the fifth of November, and we've been talking before, and I've talked with, you know, many on our team here as the council. And just for a little background and reminder to the council, because I kind of have learning some things, is that we do have this fair share housing trust fund that is funded when we have new building. And in, and the way that we as a council, we approve a proposed budget for the trust fund, listing who, what organizations have access to that. So we have special needs housing that has access to it, and those things need to be by resolution put on to have the opportunity to subsequently bring a need to the council for approval for some monies to be used for any affordable housing needs. And the Allenville Senior Housing Board has, we have not been, we're not on the current list. So currently, the Allenville Senior Housing units, of which we have sixteen on C B A Court, are not eligible to actually even come to the council and request it. So the first step in the process will be, over the coming council meetings, we will be bringing a list of identified projects, needs, repairs, such as the roofs, which you'll see, we are going for a grant. Sherri De Palma will be applying for a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant to the Bergen County Block Development.
Community Development.
C D B G.
I can't get those initials right. Anyway, that's on for us to approve today. And so that's just something to be, to, you know, just so you know it's coming down the pipe, and it's important because we had all moved ahead the last time when we were trying to just figure out ways for them to build up the emergency fund. Right? Am I missing it?
Nope, that sounds right.
Excellent. And then lastly, I also was at the convention, and it was great. I, it was great. It was good. It was a lot of good information, and I feel like it helped me grow as a councilperson, which is always good. So thanks.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so for two twenty West Crescent, which is the front building, we're still waiting to close on that. We're still working through lots of documents. As we all probably know, it is not the best time to build right now, so we are still doing some value engineering and have to work out some numbers. So we have a little bit of work to do before we can close on that. But we also just received word yesterday, as a matter of fact, that we were granted eighty five thousand dollars towards the remediation. So that was good news, and that was put in probably like a year ago. Um, there's two bids awards on the agenda tonight. So Crestwood, we were, had some damage at Crestwood during our last storm, so we have a ward to actually fix that repair, the breach that we had in the lake, and also the streetscape. So we'll be working on the next two phases, which will be going down the two, the quarters on both sides of our main street. October third is our holiday walk sponsored by the Chamber. The Borough is working hard to get our downtown festive. I think the wreaths look awesome. At December third, not October third. Lissa, you're the only one paying attention.
We just didn't want to interrupt.
Um, yeah, I think they look super. We actually did a drive-by today. They looked, they look really good. Just a little fluffing of the wreaths and them all ready to go. Um, the playground is
Monday will be closed as of Monday.
Is going to be closed on Monday. Thank you. Our new equipment came in. It was supposed to be delayed, and we're super happy that the next phase of it will be starting, and we will have to close to, to do that. And same thing, went to the convention. It was super informative, and it was great to get together. It was nice to see people getting back to normal, and there was a lot of good speakers. So definitely learned a lot.
Stop at every vendor and make sure that she understands everything they have to offer. So she can talk to you about all.
Are you saying that with some not loving your heart?
Like, move it along.
Your honor, be totally transparent. Myself and Councilman O'Toole told all the vendors that she be there.
Yeah, they were like, oh, she's the one. She'll talk to me.
Set me up.
So they were all ducking.
They were not.
Sorry, Matt. You're up.
Absolutely. Going to be short this evening. Administration, Finance, and H R Committee has not had a meeting since we last met, but we have one on the books now for Monday. I would just like to thank Alyssa for her hard work on best practices checklist. We've started the budgeting process beginnings, and I would like to thank Councilwoman Holman for her work on helping us get a little bit of breathing room coming up in the future with the cell, the water system. And I attended the convention yesterday also. My first time there, it's pretty interesting. Some good speakers, some kind of boring speakers, but.
I had to teach him how to sit in the back, not the front row. Just in case.
Like Jim is doing back there. Having a seminar for an hour and a half on a government topic.
Two hours.
Twenty minutes. That's all I got.
Good. Thank you. Jim, you ready to give your report?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein.
Certainly.
The D P W report, we're getting ready for winter, although today didn't seem like it was, winter was going to be coming, but I think tonight it's going to blow in. And we may be seeing snow in the coming weeks. The, the flags have been removed from the decorative poles after Veterans Day. The holiday decorations are being installed, and as Councilwoman Losinski said, the downtown area is going to be spruced up quite nice. The wreaths have really, along with the new lights down in the downtown district, it really does make it look nice. The, the firehouse has had new ductwork installed for the H V A C system, the heating ventilation air conditioning system. And tran engineering was also called in to inspect the H V A C control panel at the Allenville Police Department. So we're, we're taking care of those things as well. The curbside leaf pickup program is still in operation. If you live on the west side of the train tracks, your last week for curbside leaf pickup is November twenty ninth. And if you're on the east side of the tracks, which is where I live, on Woodland Ave, I'm on the east side of the tracks. Our last week is December sixth. I think it's a great program that we offer to our residents. The important thing is that you must put the leaves in a brown biodegradable paper bag. You're not allowed to leave loose leaf piles in the street. You will be notified that that is a problem and told to remove it immediately. The, the compost site is going to be open until December twelfth. So December twelfth is going to be the last day that that is open. And just to remind everybody, Saturdays, the compost site is open from nine A M to three P M, and on Sundays from nine A M to one P M. For those people who continue to bring the, the leaves to the compost center. The, on the green team front, we're going to be the green team. The next green team meeting is on December seventh. We are going to have a guest speaker company that produces a machine that condenses the styrofoam down to a product that is recyclable and saleable at twenty five cents a pound. Right now, the price is actually going up, which is nice. And Waldwick is actually hosting a styrofoam collection event this Saturday, November twentieth, from ten A M to one P M or until the trucks fill up. So if you're going to go there with your styrofoam, get there as close to ten o'clock as possible because these are popular events, and in the past, the trucks have filled up, and they've unfortunately had to turn away some people. The Waldwick Recycling Center, where this collection event is happening on Saturday, is located at the end of Industrial Park Road. That's located off of Hopper, and in Waldwick, Hopper Ave is what we call Chestnut Street in Allendale. So for anybody going down there, you take Chestnut Street. When you cross over the train tracks, it becomes Hopper. And the second street in Waldwick is Industrial Park. Take that to the end, and that's their recycling center down there. And I think that that covers it for me for this meeting. It's been a relatively quiet couple of weeks, but I don't want to jinx myself. Too late.
All right. Thanks, Ari. Thanks so much, Councilman Strouch. It's seven fifty nine. So we are going to conclude. I will save the balance of the reports for the regular session. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
Second.
Second, Steve, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great. Everyone stay put. We're coming back in a minute. Okay.
Four minutes to wrap up.
Oh, you went a little long.
You had a filibuster.
It is now eight oh four. The time is eight now. It's eight o'clock. This is the November eighteenth, twenty twenty one regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall. Welcome to everyone live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. At this time, I would ask the public president to please. Mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be two more opportunities. For the public to speak, we'll advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year. And copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty one sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Thank you. If you could all please rise and join me to salute the flag. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Public comment on agenda items only. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on agenda items? Not seeing anyone. Close the meeting to the public for agenda items. Approval of the minutes, as I discussed in the work session, we will be. Approving the May twenty seven, twenty twenty one work session and regular session minutes. Councilman Strouch, Jim, you have to abstain from this one. But everyone else can vote. Can I request a motion to approve the May twenty seven, twenty twenty one work session and regular session minutes?
Salute Sasso.
Thanks, Steve. Second.
O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes.
Great. Next is the consent agenda. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda. So thank you, Matt. Second. Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
Um, can I just correct myself from my, I said in the CDBG grant that was for a hundred and sixty, it's actually for a hundred and forty. So the twenty thousand dollar error is a little different than the October.
Right. Good. No, good. I'm glad you corrected.
I know. I was like.
I'm glad you corrected it so that the minutes are correct. Nope, that's, that's fine. Any new business? Okay, before we go to the committee report or the staff reports, I'm going to give my report. Which I am delighted to do. General election and the sale of the water system, we discussed it a little bit, but I want to thank every resident who came out and voted this year in the general election. I want to thank everyone who put their name on the ballot. It's not an easy thing to do, win or lose. I know we all know the time, the hard work and the sacrifice it takes to run. Special congratulations to Councilwoman Liz Holman. On her reelection and Councilwoman-elect Suzanne Lovasolo on her election to the council. I look forward to working with both of them and the rest of the members of the council in two thousand twenty two. We will hold our reorganization meeting on January third, seven PM, where they will both be sworn in. Or want to thank all the residents in Allen though who voted on the sale of the Allenville Water System. To sue as the referendum passed by an overwhelming majority. And thank you to Councilwoman Liz Holman for all of her hard work.
Team effort.
Yep. Veterans Day ceremony. Thank you for everyone who came out on Veterans Day. We had, I think, record crowd, a hundred, whatever the number was. Who to honor those who served and continue to serve our country. It was a beautiful morning at Memorial Park. We were fortunate to have Mr. Anthony Bailey, Senior Vice Commander of District Two of New Jersey VFW to give a powerful and moving keynote address. I mean, he is just really a force to be reckoned with. I mean, just what an impressive person. I was honored to be the MC and happy to see so many friends, neighbors, community leaders in attendance. And I think we had a record turnout. A new police chief. As many of you know, Chief Sherb will be retiring on December thirty first. After a forty year career in law enforcement and over ten years of Chief of Police of the Allenville Police Department. We all want to thank Chief Sherb for his dedication to our community and we will look forward to recognizing his service in the near future. And. I've always considered him not just the chief and sergeant for that, but a friend, someone I could call in need and someone I could reach out to. So I want to, we'll thank him more fully, but I want to mention that today. After a thorough, thorough promotional process tonight, on behalf of the governing body, I am pleased to announce that Officer Michael Dillon will be appointed as the new Chief of Police. To the Allenville Police Department come January. Our sincerest congratulations to Officer Dillon. We are looking forward to working with him in the year ahead and beyond, and our thanks to all of the final officers who participated in the promotion process.
I'm going to back.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you to our Sergeant Griffith, who's serving as the officer in charge in the interim, who's doing an outstanding job. He's really, he's above and beyond. Thank you, Jim. Menorah lighting. We're happy to bring back the menorah lighting ceremony this year on Monday, November twenty ninth, at six o'clock on the front lawn outside the Borough Hall. Thank you to Valley Kabod. For organizing this special evening. I invite the community to join together to celebrate Hanukkah and enjoy light refreshments, music and children's prizes. Now for the moment that we we have not been waiting for, because we kept trying to push it off year after year after year after year, but it looks like we're gonna. Councilman Jim Strouch is going to be winding up his his career as Councilman in Allenville. A bitter, bitter, bittersweet moment. Sorry, Jim. We're gonna put you on the spot, but at our just our December second meeting, we will be honoring Councilman Strouch for his eighteen years of service as an elected official. More details will follow in the coming weeks. But the hope, we hope that the public will join us via Zoom to thank Councilman Strouch and wish him the best in his retirement from the council. So. It's our next meeting. We'll be reading something for him at the council meeting and then we hope once the meeting ends to to be a little more. Off script and tell them how we really think, feel about them. I say that with love, Jim.
Thank you, Ari.
So that's at our next meeting. Thanksgiving, our administrative offices will be closed on November twenty fifth and twenty sixth for the holiday. And on behalf of the Borough, I wish everyone a safe and healthy, safe, healthy and enjoyable Thanksgiving. Now we go to staff reports.
I'll be very brief, Mayor. Worked with Mr. Kissner on certain personnel matters and as well as some property maintenance issues. Tomorrow, we have a negotiation session with our white collar unit. Hopefully we can bring that to closure. I attended with several of the council members, the the League Conference in Atlantic City over the last couple of days, and I do think the programs were were good, were very varied and. I think they all dispersed into separate arenas and heard separate programs. A lot of good information that will wind up, I think, being shared at the committee level and and moving forward will be useful to the Borough. As Councilwoman Holman mentioned, in the wake of the successful passage of the the referendums. Now, now that it's been approved, the implementation aspect, and that is again Yeoman's work for the committee. Trying to put together that which is being conveyed now that it's been approved and that requires, you know, identifying and isolating not only the physical assets. But all of the easements that are used as part of the water system, which we all take for granted and you never see, but obviously as part of the conveyance, Sue has needs to gain access to all aspects of the facilities that are being conveyed. So. A lot of work ahead. As Councilwoman Wozinski said, two twenty, two thirty, we're working on timing issues as a results as relates to the two twenty property and. You know, a lot of work there, a lot of ongoing discussions with Hampshire. So that while maybe a little bit more on the back burner than it's been is moving back toward the front burner. And I think I think that pretty well covers it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thanks for all your hard work as always. And Michelle?
Sure. Thank you. We had another successful election in Allendale on Tuesday, November second. It was our first general election with in-person voting since the COVID nineteen pandemic. That was the first time voters were using iPads to sign in instead of in the old paper voting books. Because the first time that we had early voting. So even with all those new processes, things went relatively smoothly smoothly at Allendale. And I want to thank Tatiana, John Gill, Ron, Dan Richards, Rich McDowell, Ray Frazier. Chief Sherb and Detective Rizzo for all their assistance in making it a successful and smooth election. I just wanted to share some statistics with you from the election. There were five thousand seven hundred and fifty eight registered. Voters eligible to vote on Election Day or for this election. Of that, there were two thousand seven hundred and ninety eight or forty eight point five nine percent of the voters eligible who cast their ballot. Two thousand one hundred and sixty two voted at the polls on Election Day, four hundred and forty seven voted by mail, sixty seven voted provisionally and a hundred and two voted at early voting locations before Election Day. The Bergen County Clerk's Office certified the election results on Monday, November fifteenth. And has posted the countywide results on their website, which is BergenCountyClerk.org. You can go to their website. Locally, Liz Holman and Suzanne Lovasolo won full terms on the council. Justin Curl and Gail Trumbetti. As representatives on the Northern Highlands Regional Board of. As Allendale's representatives. David Verbel to the Allendale Board of Education and Natalie Capano. Won by write-in and has accepted a term on the Allendale Board of Education. So congratulations to everyone. And the sale of the water system was approved by a vote of one thousand eight hundred and seventeen to five hundred and forty nine noes.
Great.
So overwhelming. Support. Bergen County sent me an email today that Winter Wonderland is back at Van Swon Park. It will be opening on Friday, November twenty sixth, so next week. They have invited all towns to decorate our trees. So. Starting this coming Monday. So we'll work on getting that done because our tree, I believe, is right at the entrance. A, you know, we're the first alphabetically. And their tree lighting will take place on Saturday, December fourth at six thirty PM. And for more details, you can go to the county's website.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, you as well.
Two minutes that came up, Councilman Sasso wrote about the drone. I think some of yous know, some of yous might not know. I'm also in my spare time on the Teterboro Tamac, on the commission, so Tamac Commission. We had a meeting in October. I requested some numbers. I will share those numbers with you in regards to the several patterns in Teterboro. When I bring you up to speed on to any of residents, any Allendale residents or neighboring residents, bring it up. You guys will be put to speed on that. I think as you all know, I'm also a member, commissioner on the Bergen County Community Development Grant. Last year, the Allenville Senior Housing put an application together for generators. The chairman, as well as the committee and the council agreed that I could vote on, so I'm not a bony member of the council or involved with the Allenville Senior Housing. So I will be, for some reason, the rest of the committee does look to me when it comes to mechanical and construction type applications. So I will be keeping an eye out for the roof application. For the Allenville Senior Housing, I'm sure we are as good as the application was last year for their generators.
That was, wasn't that just, oh no, housing, right?
Housing, yeah. Okay, yeah, it's okay.
Great. The funniest thing I think I heard tonight was you said in your spare time. Yeah, no such thing for you. You put forty eight hours in every twenty four hour day. Lissa, anything you'd like to add? Okay, great. Thank you. Public comment. We are going to be going into closed session. But anyone from the public wish to be heard?
So my name is Jim Wright, Allendale resident, and just want to thank you all for approving the resolution to encourage businesses to. Stop using these rat poison bait stations and. And also the Borough has stopped using them on your own property, which is great. And the next step is to try to take this statewide. I've been working with New Jersey Autobahn. They're going to try to get legislators to introduce some legislation sort of mirroring what Allendale's done. So. Here's to you guys and special thanks to Steve Sasso and Jim Strouch. So these are the rat poison bait stations and. There's over seventy of these in town. And half of them, I would say, are like this one, either no label or they're not marked what poisons inside. And if a rat takes some of this kind of turquoise poison, eats it and goes off and dies. It's often, but not often, but it happens that raptors and other wildlife eat these poisoned rats and they die too. In the past year, I know of at least two examples in Allendale, Great Horned Owl and a Cooper's Hawk. And there's been a couple other cases where it was too late to have the have the testing done, but I found a dead mink from the celery farm last week. No visible trauma. I talked to the state vet and she said it was too late. To do the necropsy on it. So we're not sure, but that's the first thing I thought of when I saw this dead mink was it was poisoned. The other thing I'd like to just mention is thanks to the town for starting to crack down on the open dumpsters. I have to remind you that Borough Hall has an open dumpster and it's pushed against the fence and it's perpetually open and it's overflowing now. So if we just move that dumpster out and close it, so keep rats away would be a big help. The idea behind these things was they're temporary and used as the last resort and in Allendale, they're used all the time and. Often unlabeled. So that's, I just want to thank you for all you've done and just wanted to mention. If you have Tyco, the animal service, if you, they see any kind of dead animal, it's not dead from trauma, it's sort of a carnivore, a fox, a mink. A raptor to let me know and I'll try to get a necropsy done on that that animal. So basically, I want to thank you all. Just a couple things to look forward to and hopefully we'll move forward in the future. So.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jim. So I think as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Wright is the celery farm marsh warden and our local bird expert, he also writes a column. Biweekly Thursdays in the Bergen Record, which I never miss. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And I have a copy of the resolution here if anybody wants to see it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark Savistano, twenty two Cleveland Place. Mayor, I had mentioned a concern to you just prior to the election regarding. The wording of the the public question. And you were kind enough to reply, but I would like to read my concern into the record and. Try to get some additional information. What I had said to you was I was taken aback by the inclusion of the phrase legal ballots for the public. What I had said to you was, I was taken aback by the inclusion of the phrase "legal ballots" for the public question, which I felt was entirely unnecessary and leads, lends undue credence to the false notion of substantial voter fraud and perpetuates the notion that we must question the validity of our elections before votes are even cast. That's an attack on our democratic republic that should be rejected at every level of government. I will point out that there was no such mention of legal ballots for the second public question regarding wagering on college sports. As an independent voter and your constituent, I want to voice my opposition to any such wording in future public questions if the borough has control of the content. And I just want to make clear that this is something that bothers me terribly about national elections, and I was sorry to see that seep into our local election. I was happy that the candidate, Chittarelli, made very clear that he felt that there was no malfeasance in our elections. What I had asked in my original question, that was originally sent to Liz as well as to you, was who had control over the wording for that public ballot? And if those words came locally or from the county, because I want to address my concerns where they can best be answered. So I was wondering if you could comment on that any further, or if I should direct my concerns to the.
To that, I gave you a, a quick, quick response, or not quick that it was wrong, but I gave you a abbreviated response. If you want to speak to that, Ray.
Based on, on the concerns you've expressed, I, I would suggest also going to the county, because the municipality does put forth suggested language. So, so there is an initiative process here, but it is subject to county clerk approval. So I would say it's a two-step process. So to the extent that you, you know, want to make it heard in different forms, I would raise it with the county clerk as well as the county executive.
Okay, and, and again, no malicious intent whatsoever. I, I hate to see this language. I hate to see people think that we don't have fair elections. There's certainly no evidence of that here in Allendale, in New Jersey, and, and any other states that choose to address this in a negative way. I feel it's improper. So I wanted to, yes, I wanted to make that clear.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Okay, not seeing anyone. We are going to go into closed session. We're, for that, we're gonna kick you all out. When we come back, there's nothing left to the meeting. We're just gonna close, close the meeting at that time. So we will reconvene probably in about five minutes, just to adjourn the meeting. I, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash two-six-five to authorize the governing body to enter into closed session to discuss a pending litigation matter. So moved. Thank you, Matt. Second.
Second, O'Connell.
Second. Thank you, Ed. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman. Yes, Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strauss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
And just so there's no misperception as to that this is a potential litigation matter involving an Oprah situation. Thank you.
Right. Good clarification, right. So the public, please note, again, we're going to go into closed session at this time. It's anticipated we will reconvene in about five minutes, just to adjourn the, the meeting. No formal action will be taken. Minutes of the meeting will be taken and released to public at the time the matter is reserved. So with that, thank you very much.
Okay.